School Board at 7:00 PM, Monday, August 26, 2013, in the Administration Building, Boardroom, a lower level. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silence. Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. DeRose?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Excused.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Yes, please come to the microphone. Hi, please, can you state your name and your address?
Laura Leach, 1862 North 73rd Street, Wauwatosa.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just wondering what plans you have in place to retain experienced teachers?
We have presented on that topic earlier, in earlier meetings. I wasn't at the last meeting, I don't know if any comment was made at that time. We plan to have an update in September on what the final retention facts are, when the rosters are 100% set. Dr. Erdl, do you have any other?
Sure, I'd certainly be happy to sit down and talk with you at some point and talk about the efforts we have for retention, the things that we're working through. Certainly, if you want to give me a call, I'd be happy to meet with you and discuss some of those along with Mr. Chan and our HR Director, who is not here this evening.
Right, thank you.
Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? There is none, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. DeRose.
Mr. DeRose.
Mr. DeRose?
Thanks, Mike.
I've been away for a month, I can't, I lose track. Okay, is there any Board comment on the consent agenda? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yeah.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries 6-0. We'll now move to the Human Resources section of the agenda. Mrs. Fee, please read Items 1 and 2.
Item 1, it is recommended that the School Board approve the administrative appointment of Thomas Hanley as Washington Elementary Principal, effective July 31, 2013, for a one-year contract for 221 days, worked at a salary of $100,000. Item 2, it is recommended that the School Board approve the administrative contract of John Kellerman as Whitman Middle School Associate Principal, effective August 26, 2013, for 221 days per year at a salary of $77,000, prorated to days worked, and I so move.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there any Board discussion? Mrs. Randall?
Could we have separate action, please, on the two appointments?
Yes, we may.
Thank you.
If I can introduce Mr. Hanley and Mr. Kellerman are both here this evening. Just a couple of comments about each of them. Mr. Hanley comes to us, I think it was probably five, six years ago, I had the opportunity to go to Gold of My Year School where he was the principal and observe the creative and exciting things that were going on in Gold of My Year. And Mr. Hanley has come to us last year as an elementary curriculum coordinator and has accepted the position at Washington. His experience, his passion, his knowledge is going to be a great fit at Washington. I know he's already actually started there and has made some significant enroits at that school, so he may want to say a few words, he may not, but.
Shall I use the microphone here?
Please.
Yes, please.
So, welcome, Tom Hanley, as introduced by Superintendent Erdl. Everything he said is true. Underspoken a little bit, but true. No, I actually just came tonight to greet you and let you know that, I know that you have my resume, and really, on that resume, what you don't see is what I really loved most, which is being a principal, actually. Of all the jobs that I did, I really enjoyed being a principal the most. It was most fun, and it was most challenging. And to tell you the truth, is every year that I was principal, I thought, oh my God, I'll get it down this year, and I never got it down. So, I welcome the opportunity to get it down now. But I know that, you know, there'll be challenges in this position as well, and I'm just looking forward to it. And I've met with the staff, really one-on-one, before school started here, and asked for their ideas, and gave them some of mine. And it looks like we're on a good path to success for this year. So, I don't know if you have any questions of me, though?
I'd like to say just thank you for helping us out.
Oh.
From what I understand, you were retired, so to speak.
I didn't think I'd see this path again, but, you know, the truth is, I never saw what was coming at me before this, you know? When I was a teacher, I was drafted to be a principal, you know, when I was, as a teacher, I was also drafted to be a curriculum instruction supervisor. So, it's just, you know, some people know that's what they want to be for the rest of their life, a doctor, a nurse, whatever. I didn't know that. And so, this comes to me, and I just think it's a great opportunity, but I thank you, because it's a privilege, really, I know it.
Any other comment from the Board?
And John Kellerman is the recommended candidate for Associate Principal at Whitman. John has, John went through a process where there were over 45 people interviewed, 125 people had applied for the position, and John comes to us directly from Whitman, where he has been teaching 6th grade for a number of years. There's some, I've gotten to know John over time, and some significant strengths that he has, and clearly his relationship building and ability to develop and maintain relationships with all different types of students and all different types of parents, and I've seen that firsthand, and seen it in action. Very passionate about what we do in Wauwatosa. I think that comes through very strong, and very proud of what he's gained in his time in Wauwatosa and where he's gone. I think when you talk about a growth mindset, I think John comes to mind as somebody that's always looking to get better, always looking to grow and grow in this role as an Associate Principal, so. John?
He was such a nice job when I had to come there, and I had something all written out, but now I'm going to switch the format a little bit.
You'll find my notes.
Sure, sure. It's interesting that he said, you know, he wasn't picked out for that role. I actually come from a family where my father was my principal at the same stage, when I was going through middle school, and actually all through grade school, because it was a K-8 school. And I grew up saying, I will never be my father. I will never go into that role. And as time went on and time went on, I knew I wanted to be in education, and I actually, prior to becoming a teacher, I spent some time in the corporate role in the private sector, working in marketing, and I was fortunate enough to get back into the Wauwatosa School District. And I look at the timing of things, as far as how fortunate I was, and I think about the timing of when I got into Wauwatosa. And I think that, in the time that I've been there, there's been such a growth mindset, and that's the thing that I've always really appreciated. What Dr. Erdl said is very true about me. I think that what I can offer Whitman is, a lot of those things that he said in the Wauwatosa School District, was a lot of those things that he said, I'm going to bring an enthusiasm and energy for student learning across the wide spectrum of students that we have. But I also feel that one of my strengths is, I look at managing expectations and change as an opportunity, and I feel like I have some creative gifts in being able to get that message across and move forward in the direction that we need to. And that's really the thing that excites me about the Wauwatosa School District, because ever since the day I got here, from that very first moment that I met with Jeff Karen and the principal at Whitman, I was in a growth mindset like I never thought I was going to be. I was on a leadership team right away. I was offered countless opportunities, literally from the moment I stepped in that building. And what I realized was, I have a great opportunity here, because what Wauwatosa's offering me is, they're offering me the chance for unlimited growth and potential in the exact field I want to be in, in a field that's really going to impact an entire community. And because of that, I felt it was my responsibility to take every opportunity given to me, and with those opportunities, expect nothing but excellence from myself, from my peers, and also from the students. I'm excited about the direction of the Wauwatosa School District, and it is truly my desire to be a part of the mission of the Wauwatosa School District for years to come. And I want to thank you guys for the vote of confidence, and say that, you know, I'm deeply appreciative of the confidence that I've been, and the vote of confidence I've received from the Whitman staff, Dr. Erdl, community members, and now from you.
Thank you, those were great comments. Is there any other Board, any Board comment? All right, is there any community comment? Okay, so we'll call the roll, we'll vote separately on the two items. Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll on the motion to appoint Thomas Hanley as Washington Elementary Principal?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Epstein.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0 with one abstention. And now, Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll on the motion to approve John Kellerman as Whitman Middle School Associate Principal?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries 6-0. Thank you, and congratulations to both of you. This is a very happy day for us, that you both accepted these positions. So, we'll now move to reports, the Superintendent's report, please, on the district development plan for 2013, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Each year for the past four years, we have put together a district development plan based out of our long-range plan that started in 2007, has been renewed several times to this point. The purpose of the district development plan is really to try to winnow down what we're doing as a district on a front and back piece of paper, one sheet of paper, and saying, here's our goals, excuse me, here's our initiatives, and here's our projects that we're going to be working on. The goals are something that hasn't changed for the past four years, and we've continued to make progress, and I share that in our last report out on the district development plan. The initiatives are, most of those are ongoing. One of the goals that we're looking at administratively is no new major initiatives this year. We've had a lot of curriculum work over the past several years, and a lot of major initiatives, and really trying to say, let's get better at what we're doing. And I think you can see that through the initiatives that we're looking at. So, I think some of, and also, at the end of the year, we do report out in a form to say, this is what we said we're going to do, and then the report is, how did we do and what we said we're going to accomplish. Some of the initiatives, and I'll just kind of walk through some of the information that's on the district development plan. One relates to secondary scheduling, as I mentioned. It is ongoing, and really looking at the middle school and high school, and bringing forward something that is going to meet the needs of our students. We have been discussing several different models, and really relooking, there's a number of initiatives that have been undertaken in the past couple of years that impact where this could end up going, or be delayed, but at some point, we'll make some decisions and share that information. Data-driven decision-making, I think that's kind of a buzzword that's always talked about in education, but I think we're starting to live it in a lot of good ways, really, when we talk about professional learning communities. It is based on data, and the growth is based on data, and the changes to instruction are really based on data, and trying to make decisions based on what's working and what's not working. The evaluation model, looking at piloting the new state evaluation across the district. Last year, we piloted in a couple of spots, this year, it's going to be in every building. All of the administrators are going through the training now on Teachscape and on the evaluation system, and really looking at our current evaluation model, and trying to get people on board with this, and possibly holding our evaluation in hiatus for this current year, as we move into this, because I think the, not I think, I know that this is going to be an overwhelming task for 14, 15, to really, truly have this in place. There's some estimates on the number of hours that it takes for principals to do a current evaluation, and the number of hours under the new system quadruples. So, we're going to have to manage that system, but I think the pilot this year is going to help us figure out the direction we're going. It's going to bring consistency across our district, and hopefully across the state, on what good teaching looks like, and how we improve. The grading transformation, that is an initiative that was started last year. We've talked plenty about that, but that's going to be something that you'll see in the initiatives for several years, as we continue to work at looking at transformation of grading. We had a group of teachers this summer that spent quite a bit of time with the Student Learning Department to work through a grading handbook and get information together. So, there's going to be a lot of communication coming from teachers, and from our buildings on the direction for grading. And we're going to be opening the Wauwatosa Virtual Academy, roughly 100 students. We're continuing to work on those enrollments. Even today, I had a discussion about another student that is going to be in our charter school. Professional learning communities, something we started five years ago, and I think when people think professional learning communities, they relate it to the early release on Wednesdays. And it was interesting, when we did start it, dating back to that time, that there were many teachers that really didn't like the concept of having that time, and what are we going to do at this time, and we need more instructional time, when the fact was, we didn't, we actually added instructional time and put the early release in. Most recently, in our survey results related to PLCs, a lot of feedback that we need more time for collaboration, and I think that talks about a lot of our teachers really understanding what professional learning communities are, what collaboration looks like, and how that can change instruction and lead to greater student learning. On Wednesday, we are going to have Eric Twiddell back as one of our speakers on opening day to really kind of take us back where we were five years ago, renew, make sure we get back to the core principles and the four questions of PLCs, and make sure we haven't lost focus. We've got an opportunity to have him working with us and continue his work with us, but I think our, certainly our Student Learning Department has really championed this, and our buildings have championed PLCs throughout the district. Building leadership teams are going to continue, and really look at Common Core alignment, and get ready for the Smarter Balance Assessment, which was piloted this past year, which will be the assessment for, in particular, elementary and middle school, early middle school areas. Focus is going to be on literacy, the secondary is going to look at benchmark, common assessments, and reading in the content area, and that will continue on. The model for building leadership teams has been one, in my opinion, probably the most successful model you can have for professional development. We bring together teacher leaders from each building, work through professional development with them, and they pay it forward and take it out to the buildings, and we've seen some real positive success, and I think Mr. Kellerman even mentioned how some of those things get carried out, and how that can become something, what we do and who we are as a school district. Common Core, we're going to continue the alignment with the Common Core. The Common Core seems to have become very political. I think it's just good practice, and it's a good thing to have consistency in our benchmarks, in our targets for learning, and we're going to continue down that path. Hopefully, that initiative continues statewide as well. RTI, something we continue to work on. It's really looking at staff development for interventions, and how do we meet the needs of those students that have already learned what we want them to know, and those students that have not met those levels. So, we're going to continue the work on RTI, as well as PBIS. Making sure we grow our depth of knowledge with PBIS and Positive Behavior Intervention supports. It is, it has been implemented in each of the buildings, some of them better than others, and more thorough, and we've got to make sure we get more consistency with PBIS. Communication, even though that's a small sentence, it's probably the biggest piece of work that we're going to have to struggle with and get better with. Communication has changed, and we've got a number of initiatives that we're going to be working on to change how we communicate, and communicate in more and different and better ways. And we'll be working on that throughout the year, creating different opportunities for communication, and that two-way communication, back and forth from the buildings and schools, out to families and students and parents, and back and forth, and making sure there's opportunities for two-way communication. Student Services, we do have an audit that is currently underway for our Student Services throughout the district. That should be completed by the end of October, being done by a faculty member from UWM, who has performed audits of Student Services departments across Wisconsin, as well as in other states, and even internationally. So, we have a very fine person that is going to help, and I think that's just another step. We've done it with the curriculum audit, we've done it with open enrollment, and using outside experts to really give us an outside view of what we're doing, and give us some feedback to help us get better. And the bullying piece of, I think that's just something that has been on here for a number of years, and it's something we have to continue to work on and keep it on the forefront, because if kids are being bullied, they're not learning as well as it could be. So, the goal is to end bullying, and to really make sure we're doing things that we can within the curriculum, within how we handle discipline issues. So, we're going to continue that work. Under the Projects, Employee Handbook, it's something we update every year to make sure the information that employees need to know of policies and procedures, and how we operate as a school district, and that's being updated right now. Athletics Field Committee, the last committee started in 2000, was convened in 2005 or 2006. All of the initiatives pretty much that were on that plan, other than, I think it was, there were seven initiatives, and six of the seven have been completed, so it's an opportunity to get together with the city, community members, parents, and the school district, to look at all of our athletic fields and develop recommendations. I mentioned communication, again, it's listed under both projects and initiatives, because it is that important. And also looking to work with the School Board, the School Board has expressed a desire in to create opportunities for direct feedback in a setting different than a School Board meeting, where there can be dialogue, more so back and forth with staff as well. Compensation restructure, we've gone through a long process this summer to really look at a new compensation system. The latest meeting was this morning, for several hours. We have a group of teachers from across the district at all different levels, and a number of two-building principals, and a number of central office administrators, working to come up with a new compensation structure. We've been moving in a very positive direction, and looks like we will have something to be able to recommend to the School Board within a month, hopefully within a month, as we continue to work through. And we're going to communicate the information and get more feedback on the model from more teachers. So, it's been a positive, positive direction. Marketing Committee, that has been going on for at least nine years, and we're going to continue on with our marketing efforts internally and externally. Marketing is an important component in school districts now. It's become a competitive-type environment, and really a business focus when it comes down to brand and imaging, and how we respond, and how we communicate what we do. We are going to hold an update meeting this year on the long-range plan, to make sure we're continuing to move in the right direction. The original plan was 90-some pages, I believe, in 2007, and we've worked down to three different strategies, and the district development plan that comes out of there. Montessori and the WSTEM each will grow, and looking at the growth, we've got people on waiting lists, so we have interested parties to continue to grow this school. The Montessori has expanded this year into an additional classroom in this building, and there'll be one more classroom that's available. A new website has been purchased, and the target go-live date with the new website is January. Our website's only five years old, but it's five years old, and it's dated, and we want something that's, that looks better and is easier to maneuver around and find information that people are looking for, so that will be go-live, we're going to go live with that in January. And also looking at partnerships between city agencies and school districts. We have, I know Laura Wayne Scott serves on the city's marketing committee, we have a lot of different opportunities for interaction, most recently discussions related to the charter school with UWM, and working with the city on that as well. So, we're looking for different ways to try to continue to work with the city, having discussions about shared finances, and how we can make sure that we're getting the taxpayers the best bang for the buck. If we're paying rent to the city, and the city's paying for things we're using, it's kind of redundant, and we seem to be, we're going to try to find ways to reduce some of those expenditures, so. That is really the plan, and really, like I said, it's our administrative plan to say, here's where we're going, based out of our long-range plan, here's what we're going to try to accomplish this year. And while it fits on two pages, it can be a daunting task when you think about it.
Thank you, Dr. Erdl. Is there any Board question or comment?
I have a quick question. On the website, so the January for the rollout, does, do you know, is Jamie Price doing that, or who's?
It'll be a collaboration. Laura Wayne Scott, Jamie Price, there'll be the technical pieces. I think there's going to be a whole lot of people involved. The company we did hire, they are going to take the information. We have to go through what we have on there now, make sure we get rid of what we don't want. They transfer, and they work it over to the new site, and help us arrange it. We decide the layout, the look, the feel of it, and what information goes on there.
Do you know if it has, like, templates for teacher webpages? Like, if there's, I mean, obviously, I'm not saying, are teachers all going to implement this on January, but is there?
Yes.
A capability to do that?
Yes.
To extend kind of online?
An online presence, yes.
Yeah, okay. And that's in, like, the plans for future teacher training, or?
Any other comment? Any community comment? All right, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, Meg Lee, 2029 North 81st Street. I do have a question, or a couple of questions, about the goal around AP courses, and can you explain the rationale for moving all kids towards enrollment in AP courses?
It's challenging our students, and AP is one example of a high-level course, and that's really what the target is, of trying to increase in preparing students to be college-ready. And college-ready not meaning necessarily that they're just going to college, whether they choose to go into a career, wherever they go. But, students need to be college-ready when they leave our doors, whether they choose to go to college or not, and the expectations for, no matter where they go, are high levels of math, high levels of science, and being able to communicate and write, and so that's really the target of why we're trying to get more students taking AP courses.
Will kids be able to opt out of taking an AP course?
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement, okay. Because I was just wondering, where else is this being done? Is it, has it been shown to improve academic achievement, even if kids aren't, you know, have shown, historically aren't ready for an AP course? I'm just wondering what it's, what, you know, are you basing it on what other districts are doing, or?
I mean, there's, Beth could probably talk, if you wanted to talk with Beth at some point, I mean, she's. I can make a couple of comments. Pretty good with the research on, too, about it. I taught AP Biology for 10 years, and my experience, like, my goal was to try to get all different types of students in the class, not just your honors-track students. And I intentionally would teach, like, more introductory courses to try to encourage students to take it, and the response and the feedback that I got from students of all types after they went to college, because for an AP class, you have to take an exam at the end of the year, and so part of this could include, is our goal not just to get AP, students to take AP courses, but is our goal to get them to pass the final exam? Because I found, even if students didn't pass, when they got to college, the feedback I would get was that they were still more prepared, because they had experienced a class that was rigorous.
Okay.
So, even if at the high school level, they took the course, they didn't end up passing that final exam, it's still helped them in just experiencing a more rigorous class. But I think, and Dr. Erdl, I don't know if there's any component of this goal to say, is our goal in Wauwatosa to have all students take an AP course and pass it with a score of, like, three or higher, or is the goal just to have more students involved?
I don't have a.
Because that's kind of a different.
I don't have a copy of the district development plan, but that is, we do report it out. it out in all of those different metrics, so it is important that we get more students, more students have been taking the exam, more students have been passing the exams.
Right, because those are, and it's kind of a different goal, too, like, you know, if we're okay saying, well, everyone take it, but it's, you know, if you don't pass, that's okay.
Yeah, and I think I'll just add to that, that, yes, that's, that's part of it, but some of it is access as well, like, in the past, when we weren't paying attention to that, there are certain groups of students that just naturally migrate to the AP courses, but not, there's groups of students we don't necessarily attract that way. When we think of AP, too, that, it's not just like math or science, but we have like an art AP class. We also are looking at some different variety of AP classes that, because every student has their own areas of strengths or things that are, help them to reach a high potential in an area. So, like, our AP Psychology class is really popular, but the idea is not to put pressure on students or to unknowingly make everyone feel that they have to do something they don't want to do. It's more access to that level of curriculum, because there are advantages for students.
Yeah.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know.
I have one more question on a different topic, which is the secondary scheduling. You talk about meeting needs of the secondary students, and can you talk a little bit about what needs aren't being met by the current scheduling? We're just new in the high school arena, and I guess I would like a better understanding.
I would be, I mean, it's a much longer answer, I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting and...
Okay.
Share more of that, certainly.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other community comment or question? All right. Thank you, Dr. Erdl. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Did you have a, no? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene in executive session to confer with legal counsel who is rendering advice with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved. Statutory exemption to Wisconsin's open meeting law is Section nineteen point eight-five, paragraph one, sub-paragraph G. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Fee, thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Mrs. Randall, thank you. Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRoz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Motion to move to executive session, carries six zero, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we will begin.